All right. Good morning, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the Tuesday, November 5th meeting to order. We're gonna start with a moment of silent reflection for our first responders and members of the Armed Forces, which will be followed by an invocation. And I do not see Reverend Rigby, so I will ask Commissioner Law if he would mind during invocation.
Thank you, please.
Thank you. And then that'll be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by our County Attorney, Ms. Jennifer Schuler. If anybody would please rise.
Please pray with me. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you today from, as you know, beautiful Indian River County. Father, we come to you with somewhat anxiety, and you know what big day this is today. Father, we ask that, most importantly, we celebrate our veterans, not only this weekend, but throughout the year. And Father, we ask that you provide a hedge of protection for all of our law enforcement, all of our firefighters, and all of our first responders. Father, wish us luck today. Allow us to do the job that we have been commissioned to do. We all do this in your name. Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioners, we do have an addition to the agenda of a 5B, a presentation of proclamation recognizing November 11th as Veterans' Day, and that will be presented by Commissioner Moss to the Veterans Council and Veteran Services. So I'd like to add that under 5B because it wasn't there before.
A motion to approve as amended.
All right. Motion, a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to proclamations and presentations. Our first is a presentation of proclamation dedicating November 17 through the 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week, which will be presented by myself. And I believe we have Career Source here to accept. Thank you. All right, this is a proclamation declaring November 17 through the 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week. Whereas, National Apprenticeship Week raises awareness of the vital role registered apprenticeships provide in creating pathways to quality jobs and well-paying careers throughout Indian River County and across the nation while allowing apprentices to earn while they learn. And whereas, registered apprenticeships provide inclusive opportunities for historically underserved individuals and those adversely affected by persistent poverty or inequality, providing a path for all qualified individuals, including women, youth, people of color, rural communities, and individuals with disabilities to become apprentices and contribute to America's industries. And whereas, Indian River County recognizes the registered apprenticeships and industry-driven training model are key to improving job quality and creating sustainable careers while addressing some of our nation's pressing workforce challenges, such as rebuilding infrastructure, addressing supply chain demands, supporting clean energy, modernizing our cybersecurity, and responding to economic issues. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that we declare November 17 through the 23rd as National Apprenticeship Week, adopted this fifth day of November and signed by all five Commissioners. Welcome. You want to tell us a little bit about what you guys have going on?
Sure. Thank you so much for recognizing National Apprenticeship Week. My name is Colleen Gill. I'm the Apprenticeship Navigator for Career Source Research Coast. This is Brian Bauer, the CEO of Career Source. And we are your local workforce development board for Indian River, St. Lucie, and Martin Counties. We connect employers and job seekers. We have job fairs. We provide job listings and recruitment, career exploration, a whole lot more. And it's all free services for employers and job seekers. My role as Apprenticeship Navigator is to promote registered apprenticeship as a workforce talent development and retention solution. So registered apprenticeship combines on-the-job training and related instruction for full-time, permanent employees at different businesses. It is not just for trades, as it started in the past with that apprenticeship model. The registered apprenticeship model now extends through all different industries. Some of the recent apprenticeships that we have had approved in the area are in the occupations of early childhood educator, and that's through Indian River State College. And we have a new airplane mechanic apprenticeship at TMX Aero. So this is a successful solution for a lot of different businesses. Career Source actually offers grant funding to incentivize employers to utilize this training model and to make it more accessible for them. And for employers who have participating employees, they are eligible for a wage reimbursement of 50% of the employee's wages for a portion of the apprenticeship, as well as 100% of the education paid for. So we encourage employers to look at and utilize this model. And for anyone who's interested in more information about registered apprenticeship, please reach out and contact me. You can reach me through email at cguil@careersourcerc.com, or you can look at our website, careersourcerc.com, and go to the apprenticeship section, and you'll be able to find me there. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for what you guys are doing in the community with educating and apprenticeship. I know we have a very good program in this county and throughout the Treasure Coast. We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
Jimmy Fallon.
Thank you.
You doing this?
Thanks very much.
Okay, our next item is going to be a presentation of proclamation recognizing November 11th, 2024 as Veterans' Day. This is going to be presented to the Veterans Council as well as our Veteran Services. So if you guys want to come on up, and I think we have two proclamations, one for each.
Yes, yes, we do, Madam Chair. And thank you. It's my pleasure and an honor to read the proclamation. And I'd invite the entire community to participate in the Veterans' Day events. Veterans' Day is next Monday, will be celebrated on November 11th, next Monday. In Sebastian, there is a Veterans' Day ceremony at 11:00 a.m. in Riverview Park, and that is hosted by the American Legion Post 189 and the City of Sebastian. In Vero Beach, the ceremony will be at 9:00 a.m. in Riverside Park. And that's extra special, by the way, because with the tornadoes and the hurricane, the ceremony for the dedication of the World War II memorial tribute was postponed until Veterans' Day. So this will be the Veterans' Day ceremony, as well as the dedication of that World War II tribute memorial, which was spearheaded by the Military Officers Association of America. So I invite everyone to that. And finally, speaking about tornadoes, for those who don't know, Vero Beach Veterans' Building was demolished. So the Vero Beach Elks have offered them their building, not only to meet, but to hold a Veterans' Day event, which includes a free dinner for any veteran. And for those non-veterans, it's $8. And that will be at 5:00 o'clock that day. That's Monday, November 11th, $8. And for reservations, you call, it's local, 562-8450. So I invite everyone to participate. There also are wonderful discounts available to veterans, not only that day, but during the course of the month. I know, I saw a whole list of them on Sebastian Daily, and I'm sure that they appear other places as well. Proclamation, recognizing November 11th, 2024 as Veterans' Day. Whereas, on May 13th, 1938, Congress approved an act establishing November 11th as Armistice Day, commemorating the end of World War I and paying tribute to its veterans of that war. And whereas, on June 1st, 1954, Congress approved an act changing the name of Armistice Day to Veterans' Day in order to honor all of America's war veterans who have contributed so much to the preservation of our nation. And whereas, over 16,000 veterans of all wars presently reside in Indian River County, which is host to numerous veterans organizations. And whereas, Veterans' Day is a day to recognize all of our veterans of all wars and to thank them for their services and their dedication, as well as the sacrifices that they and their families paid. And whereas, Veterans' Day is annually observed by holding ceremonies throughout the county. And whereas, Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary is a place to pay tribute to all veterans of all wars, and where a Veterans' Day service will be held Monday, November 11th, 2024. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Indian River County, Florida, that November 11th, 2024 is recognized as Veterans' Day. And the Board urges all residents and guests to remember the dedication and sacrifices of all those that have served in the military uniform to preserve our heritage of freedom, attend the ceremony on Veterans Memorial Island Sanctuary, and those throughout the county, and proudly fly the Stars and Stripes in honor of all veterans, adopted this fifth day of November, 2024, Board of County Commissioners, Indian River County, Florida, and signed by all five Commissioners. And I invite the organizations to speak.
Absolutely. First of all, on behalf of all of us here at the Veterans Council, we want to thank the Commission for this proclamation. Thank you to Commissioner Moss for reading it. And I particularly want to thank Commissioner Adams and Kim Morano for their collaboration in getting this done. We really appreciate it. I'm joined by two of my colleagues from the Veterans Council Board, Board Members Philip Wolf and Board Member Tracy Zidane. So I'm going to turn over them for a little bit more about what we're doing. And we shall want to again thank the Commission for their time and for their willingness to put this proclamation on the agenda and get it passed. Thank you.
Well, my name is Captain Philip Wolf, retired, obviously. I want to talk to you guys about our mission a little bit. We are unique in the state of Florida with what we do and what we're capable of doing. And we're growing every day. We're delivering direct aid to veterans in need, no matter if your water heater breaks, if your brakes on your car don't work, no matter what that is, we're going to come here to help. We also work with veterans and see why did they put themselves in this situation? Why are they in that situation? So we provide that aid and counseling and help with that. We also spearheading a program with the VA that provides transportation back and forth from the VA to the VA.
So as Commissioner Moss knows, because she was our first civilian on the Board of Directors for the Veterans Council, that opened the door for many of us, like myself, to be Board of Directors for the Veterans Council. So those of us who couldn't serve our country, serve our community in different ways, which I consider an honor. But we can't do it alone. Those 17,000 veterans that we serve in our community also are served by amazing organizations like yourselves, who offer funding, but also by the VSO. And we work very collaboratively with those organizations and other organizations. And we couldn't do what we do without them. So it's an honor to work with them as well and with you all. So thank you all very much.
Thank you so much. And again, we want to thank you for the proclamation today. We work hand-in-hand with the Veterans Council. In fact, just this week, we'll be at Indian River State College with our VSO team, along with our Human Services team and our ship team, making sure that our veterans have everything that they need to be successful here. We have some really great data to share that's hot off the press of the work that our heroes have been doing, serving the heroes right here in our community. We're up 40% with the number of forms we're preparing directly to the VA, ensuring that our veterans are getting the services that they deserve and the entitlements that they have earned. We have increased the number of appeals that we've done with the VA by 10% just this last year. And the number of clients we have been processing is up 17% from last year to this year. And a lot of that is due to some reorganization and support that our VSOs are doing with our walk-in Wednesdays and walk-in Thursdays, ensuring that if our veterans have questions that they need answered, that they're not waiting longer than 30 days for that. In fact, our wait time is down to 35 days overall with any of our VSOs. So we're really excited about that. We'll see you at Indian River State College. We hope all of our veterans make it out there to see all the resources that are available to them. And then just one other thing, it is Operation Green Light, and this is part of a nationwide organization where we turn our lights green, recognizing that we're here to support all of our veterans right here in our community. So if you go by the fairgrounds, or county businesses, or our county office, you'll see them lit up green. And we're asking all of our civilians to do the same, to show support for our veterans this next week.
Wonderful. Thank you, guys.
Thanks so much.
Very quiet bunch today. I apologize. All right. Thank you, guys, both, for everything you can do. You want to do one, and then we'll do with them? So... Or together, however you want to do it. Okay, Commissioners, next item is approval of the minutes of August 20th meeting.
Madam Chair, move approval.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Just a couple things under informational. There's a residential paper shredding event on November 16th. And also, the Thanksgiving closures for SWID are attached. So everybody, take a look at that. With that, we'll move on to consent agenda. Anybody wishing to pull anything from consent? No? Anybody from the public? All right.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. With that, we'll move on to constitutional officers. 9A amended IRC DATF award application.
I thought they were attending, Madam Chair, but I'll go ahead and take that agenda item. So the request before you from the 19th Judicial Circuit is the county commission approved funds in the amount of $50,000 to assist the problem-solving courts to offset costs associated with participant program requirements. And one of the things that they didn't include in their list of activities that they'd like to provide, because it's an impediment or a challenge for them to get those that are in need of these services, is transportation services. They're not asking for any additional services or additional funds. They just want to include this as part of the wraparound services.
Madam Chair, in absentia, motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and multiple seconds. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right. Is Mr. Rigby here?
They're out.
Are they out there?
Yeah, I'll go grab one.
Okay. He's up next.
What's your way to?
Tonight.
Um... We'll give him... It took me a second to catch what you're saying. While we're waiting for Mr. Rigby, this is a good opportunity to remind everybody that today is Election Day. So please come...
Can we write it?
Okay. Well, I can move on.
Along with that, Madam Chair, regarding Election Day, later this afternoon, before close of business, there will be a link on the top of our website, a banner, for those that would like to access the scrolling live results. I understand there was a hiccup last time. So our IT after this meeting is going to work to have it done prior to close of business today. And so that'll be there for people that want to watch the election results. Just go to our homepage and click the link.
Fabulous. Thank you so much. All right, Mr. Rigby.
Yeah, my name is... Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Audrey Rigby. I want to definitely apologize for being late today. There was some death in the family yesterday, so I had to do some traveling. But I still should have been here. But there were some difficulties with the family. I was not prepared to speak today, but I was prepared to pray. Bill had to go use the restroom, so I didn't want to waste your time. So we came here to talk about the issues that we're having with the RFP that's out. And our issues are that we have... I just introduced myself.
My name is Bill Rigby, 8465, 59 a.m. I apologize, I was upstairs. I didn't know you guys would call me so early this morning. Anyway, my topic today is protest presentation to the Indian River County Commissioners on the previous RFP. Good morning, Madam Chairman, Madam Chapperson, I'm sorry, Madam Chapperson, and members of the Commission. I come before you today to address a serious issue with Indian River County's procurement process, particular concerning the current RFP with regards to the RFP reward for recycling of the collection services, which was given, which was again awarded to Waste Management. This company has held a contract for the past 20 years or more, raising significant concerns about transparency, fairness, and compliance with federal and state laws. I'm not here this morning to complain, but I'm here to give a formal protest. The continuous awarding of this contract to Waste Management without ensuring compliance with the inclusion requirements for minority-owned and disabled veteran-owned businesses violates federal and state procurement laws. I'm going to go a little bit on the federal and state laws violation. Let me remind this Commission of key legal provision that the county has failed to uphold, the Florida Small and Minority Business Assistant Act, which requires the county to actively promote the participation of minority-owned and disabled veteran-owned businesses in public contracts.
Mr. Rigby?
Yes.
I just want to interject right there. This is kind of the same conversation we've had several times. And I very much respect your position on the county's relationship with minority and women and veteran-owned businesses. But this is the second meeting after you said you were going to go make a public records request for some specific documentation to answer some of these questions that has not been made. So we cannot fulfill that. In fact, I asked you at the last meeting about that. And here we are again. The other thing I would like to point out is that you were provided with the county's process and checklist, in which we ensure that for grant-funded programs, that we are soliciting through the state certification, minority, women, and veteran-owned businesses through the state's database, as well as the Federal Small Business Association and the Minority Business Development Agency at the Federal Procurement Center. So a copy of that was sent to you. So a copy of that was sent to you, all that information, several months ago. So I believe that instead of continuing to come every meeting with the same thing and saying that we are not providing information to you, that if there are specific policies within our policy that does abide by state and federal guidelines and laws, we meet all those requirements. If there's something that you'd like to enhance, or maybe people are falling through the crack, I welcome you to bring solutions to that. But I think that we have provided you with adequate, adequate time to discuss this. And it's the same, we're not getting anywhere with that. And I really wish that you would take staff's time that they have offered to give you to go over this, to make sure that your questions are answered, but also to seek solutions from you on how to make what you might perceive as a bad process better.
Madam Chairperson, let me say this to you. I appreciate everything that you have just said to me. But I'm here today on the aspect of the recycling collection of the 1992 recycling program. And you have, this council have not demonstrated to me, or have you given me any information on what I'm asking, I'm talking about. First of all, there's no, excuse me.
No, Mr. Rigby, no.
There's no minutes.
Mr. Rigby. Mr. Rigby.
Go ahead, I'm listening.
We have provided you with everything that you have asked for, okay? And we, you are now up here wanting to talk about an agreement that was 30 years ago that has long expired. So this isn't the form for that. And I'm not going to go back and forth, but I think we've afforded you plenty of time on this subject. And if there's something else that you would like to discuss, I'm more than happy to listen to it.
I'll be back again, Madam Chairman.
We have not been provided and we're not aware that this interlocal agreement was extinguished or whatever you want to call that. In 1992, it's important to note that you have to have minutes to establish the interlocal agreement. We've asked for that, we don't have it. So I have a question. Where is the interlocal agreement minutes that establishes the guidelines for the rest of whatever you're doing? That's a question to the county commissioners?
And legal.
Or legal.
Because you're saying that you have provided me with the information.
We don't have it.
I'm saying that you have not provided me, as a matter of fact. I know you haven't provided it to me. But what I see here is that you're saying something that happened 30 years ago, but you just signed in 2023 interlocal agreement with Indian River Shores. So how is it that something happened 30 years ago and you just renewed the same interlocal agreement with Indian River Shores? And I have that right here. So I don't understand.
So you would like the minutes from the interlocal agreement from 1992? Okay. What else would you like? We'll provide that to you.
Okay, and also I would like to see, I said it before and they have not proven to me upstairs yet.
Okay.
I also would like to see in the grant that you're using for the interlocal agreement, I would like to see the furbage or the language that's in it that pertains to recyclable, that retains to, is there? That retain it to recyclable residential garbage, commercial, and gas.
Okay, Mr. Rigby, it's my understanding that we're not using a grant for recycling in that manner.
Beg your pardon?
That's my understanding.
No, you are using. When you established in 1992, you negotiated with two companies.
What grant are you specifically talking about?
When you negotiated the interlocal agreement.
Interlocal agreement?
There was a recycle that you negotiated with two companies.
Okay, so you're talking about the interlocal agreement, but you're also talking about a grant. If you want me to provide you information, I need like more specifics on what that grant is?
Well, the recycling is a grant program. They're all intertwined.
Okay.
You sure?
Well, are they not? That's a question. County commissioners, staffs. You don't use any grants for recycling? Do you have that in writing? Can we have that in writing?
Himachu, in an effort to settle this, even though we don't usually do all this, in an effort, because this can't continue. This, listen. I'm going to, I'm going to give you, I'm going to give Himachu the opportunity to answer and then...
But we have one more question.
And then we're not, but we're not doing this.
We have one more question.
Yes, Himachu, because this is the same thing that keeps coming up and I would really like to provide the proper information so we can move on.
Good morning, Commissioners, for the record. Heman Shometha, Managing Director for the Solid Waste Disposal District. Back, say, in 1992, the Florida DEP referenced a grant program. And when we pursued our interlocal agreements with municipalities, we mentioned that there could be grant opportunities. But Indian River County has not applied for or received any grants from DEP for recycling services. That's paid by residents of Indian River County.
Okay, thank you so much.
You just said you bought a piece for a truck out of grant money. No, what they said the last meeting?
No, he said they bought some equipment.
Okay, that question's been answered, so there's no grants associated. What is your next question?
The next question is this. What interlocal agreement are you using that tells you, or what law? What statute of federal government that tells you to take that document to the courthouse? What law? The interlocal agreement that has the stamp on it that says, "Take that and file it in the courthouse." I'd like to know the law that you're using for that.
There is one.
To file a, an interlocal agreement?
What statute?
To record it with the court?
Of any statute that requires you to record it.
Then why was it recorded?
It was recorded in the courthouse.
Okay, I don't know why that decision was made. I don't know of any statute.
Can you get the answer for us?
Well, we can get you the document and the minutes and then you can go from there.
I'm going, I'm going. Okay, hold on, no, 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 no. I'm going to take my seat. But what I see here today is that, to me, that every time we ask a question, it's like with who it went with the CDD? Who it went with the lease agreement? And then you want to come and portray us that we don't know what we're talking about? Or is that the, what we're asking for, you don't have it? But you have an attorney there that's supposed to be in tune with what we're asking for, even if you don't know it. That's what you have legal for. Because Himachu got a pen and said in 1992 that you don't receive no grant money or whatever, that is not the case. Because in the research and over at the courthouse, it says differently that you did sign the interlocal agreement and you did send it over to the courthouse and got a stamp. Now, if you want me to bring that information into you, I will. But I'm not going to stop talking about this until something is technically done that you want to say that you don't do this, you don't do that. I'm not going to do that, Commissioner. I'm sorry, I'm not. That's not me.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
I'd like for it to be entered into the record that we did ask for those questions. Madam Clerk.
Yes, they will be included in the minutes.
We asked the attorney about those documents and we don't know why it hasn't been signed. And they entered it to an agreement.
Okay, we understand and we've heard you and we appreciate that. And Attorney Schuler has been with us for almost a full month now. She was not here in 1992. And she is doing a fantastic job of getting up to speed. So I can't talk for the ones in the past, but she's doing a great job. So the fact that she didn't readily off the top of her head know that answer, I just want to make it clear she's a wonderful attorney for us. Thank you for your questions. We have written down the minutes that you were requested and we will make sure those are forwarded to you, okay? Thank you.
All right, Commissioners. The next item is County Administrator Matters, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, spending plan revisions.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. As you're aware, the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 has some very specific timelines involved. The first timeline at which the county must meet is all funds related that were provided but through ARPA or the American Rescue Plan must be obligated, encumbered, by December of this year. So we've had this grant since 2021. OMB has worked with the departments and all the agencies that have received funding related to this grant. And we have evaluated what our ability to, those remaining funds that may not be obligated, and therefore we're asking for a spending revision plan. What we are asking is to, the remaining balance, because we have some issues as it relates to the expenditure of funds for our various housing down payment and rehabilitation programs with ARP dollars. And so we are asking that staff is proposing the remaining balance from the $31,006,3168 of $2,387,71 be reallocated in the spending plan to fund other eligible expenses. Those expenses, because anything that we do through those dollars have to be federal, we have to follow the process set forth in the federal regulations as it relates to procurement. And so we've already done that as it relates to repaving and restriping. So we are recommending and proposing that we, the $2.4 million, of unspent funding in the aforementioned categories be reallocated towards repaving and restriping. The recommendation is, staff recommends the board consider the proposed spending plan as further detailed above totaling $31,63,168. Consider any changes and approve the attached plan with any amendments as needed. Staff further propose that any unencumbered funds in the proposed categories remaining as of December 1st, 2024 be reallocated to reduction in revenue/road resurfacing and restriping category in order to ensure all funds are encumbered by the December 34th, December 31, 2024 deadline. With that, I'll open up for any questions.
Thank you, Commissioners. Any questions on the allocation?
Madam Chair, we realize it's got to be encumbered by 12/31. Do we have any drop-dead date on when we have to accomplish this?
So yes, they have to be expended completely by December 30th of 2026. So we have two years remaining.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. All right, the next item is 11B, proposed commission meeting dates for 2025.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Contained in the agenda item are 22 dates for the calendar year 2025. There are three dates, January 28th, February 25th, and March 25th that would fall on the last Tuesday of the month. In order to schedule meetings on these dates, the proposed schedule would require an amendment to the existing county ordinance, more specifically Section 102.01 Subsection 1, which states there shall be no commission meetings on last Tuesday of each month. This is a leftover from when the commission previously met three times a month and that was a requirement, a prohibition to not meet on the last Tuesday. Again, there'd be three dates affected. We've looked at holidays. We've looked at many events that are attended, you know, and we've tried to minimize conflicts, you know, as much as possible. And I think these 22 days reflect, you know, that and this does not obviously include any special call meetings that might be scheduled and/or the budget workshop.
All right, Commissioners, any questions, comments, dates, substitute dates?
Do we have, with the ordinance not to get premature on what you're going to bring up in your matters, but do these have to go together? Do we?
This is, we're asking your approval of the proposed schedule, subject to the approval of the necessary code amendment.
Move to approve.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. With that, we will move on to... You guys okay to keep moving on or you want to take a break? Oh, it's only 9:30. I was thinking it was 10:30. I can't get this whole time change thing. All right. Thank God it does it for me and even that, apparently giving me problems. All right, Natural Resources Coastal Construction Access Policies. I'm so sorry. Welcome.
Just kidding. I know how to use the mic.
You're having problems like me.
So Kylie Yanchula, Natural Resources Director, for the record. And we're just going to hold a moment while we pull up our presentation. All right, so Coastal Construction Access Policies. Trying to advance the slide. Hold please. There we go, all right. So if you all recall back, you know, a little over a year ago, in January 31st of 2023, the board approved emergency beach access agreements for dune renourishment projects due to Hurricanes Ian and Nicole. So I'm sure you all remember that we had significant erosion along the coastline associated with those storm events and there were several property owners that requested use of county property in order to do their particular renourishment actions. So 11 agreements were executed, those projects were completed. And then we had a late applicant. So on March 5th of 2024, the board considered an additional request to close Tracking Station Beach for private construction use. Now, you all ended up deciding to deny that request. You did not have sufficient information to consider it. It was very late relative to the storm events. And during that meeting, you directed staff to create a policy so that you could consider these requests in the future. All right, so why, why create a policy for this? So basically, we are trying to balance two things. So we're trying to balance public beach access so that the recreating public has access to these facilities. And then also private dune project access because in order to protect upland infrastructure, we need to have an intact dune. So we're balancing these two issues. So basically, that was the intent of developing these policies. So basically, the Natural Resources Department worked very closely with the Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Lands Department, as well as legal, in order to draft these policies. We presented the policies to Beach and Shores so that we could obtain input. And then we went ahead and made some of the revisions to the policies that they identified during those discussions where applicable. And then here we are, we're presenting these policies to the board for consideration. And then ultimately, our goal is to implement the policies and we can oscillate between making revisions and representing, depending upon your confidence with what staff have developed. All right, so while we were working through these different scenarios in terms of use of county property, staff felt that the easiest way to accommodate this was to essentially draft two different policies. So we have one that is specific for emergencies. Again, that one will be facilitated by the Natural Resources Department, our Coastal Engineering Division. These ones, we feel that they should be fast-tracked given they're protecting upland infrastructure, they're emergency protective measures, and they're affiliated with a storm event. So we have those proposed to be approved by the county administrator. And they only apply during an emergency, which is defined as significant coastal erosion due to a weather event that puts upland infrastructure at risk. We did try to book on that. So basically, they would, this policy would go into effect once a declaration for a disaster was issued. And then we wanted it to sunset as soon as all of the county facilities are open or the DEP emergency order sunsets, whichever happens first. And then for non-emergency, again, this one would also be facilitated by the Natural Resources Department. This one would be approved by the board, given the impact to the public. And then it applies during non-emergency conditions for initial construction projects. And then maintenance activities would be ineligible. So essentially, this particular policy would apply for more major construction, for example, installing dune cores or something like that where you need to get heavy equipment on the beach in order to essentially put in those protective measures for your property. So we're proposing an application process where there is an application form, a $100 application fee with a site visit where the Coastal Engineering Division would fill out a coastal inspection report. And then that would go through an internal review process. We want, we don't want to be making decisions in a vacuum, of course. We want to ensure that the other county departments are part of that decision-making process. So obviously, we don't want to impact any planned activities that Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Lands has planned. We also don't want to create a traffic night... We also don't want to create a traffic nightmare, or we don't want to use certain resources that are already compromised in the event of an emergency, as an example. So basically, we feel that the internal review process will just make sure that we're minimizing public impact. All right, so during the site visit by coastal staff, essentially, our purpose there is to identify the erosion conditions present on the site. So we do have criteria that we follow for determining what that looks like, and we want to ensure that the project meets this particular criteria, that they do have dune erosion that they need to go ahead and take care of. We also want to confirm that there's access hindrances. So the preferred approach is that property owners use access across their own property. However, we do have scenarios that we have seen where the property owner just does not have sufficient space in order to move heavy equipment through their property. And I know a lot of you are very aware of how large an excavator is. You need at least a twelve-foot distance in order to get that through and to the other side where the dune is. And then also, we'll be creating a document for additional review by the other departments as part of our process. So these are the proposed internal review divisions. So Risk Management, Emergency Services, Public Works, and then Parks, Recreation, and Conservation Lands. All right, so we created some eligibility criteria for both the emergency and the non-emergency policies. So basically, this is kind of a checklist for staff to go through to ensure that the project is meeting the intent of these policies. So some questions that we had are, are the proposed dates outside of sea turtle nesting season? Or are sufficient permit conditions set forth to allow construction during sea turtle nesting season? So for the county projects, in order for us to do any construction during sea turtle nesting season, which we're seeing right now actually with our sector four project, you may be in the situation where you have to move nests in order for contract, for your construction to occur. So that's an example of a permit condition where it would be something that would allow construction to occur, but it would meet the sufficiency requirements. Is the county property available during the proposed dates? Do they have all of the required permits in order to move forward with the project? Will the closure lead to more than one of eight county beach parks closing at one time or date for the sole purpose of private use? So this eligibility criteria was specified so that we could ensure that the public has adequate access to our parks facilities for recreating. So we decided that maybe one was appropriate. You may not be able to go to your preferred location, however, you will still have access to one of the other seven facilities that we have. And then we did want to make it relatively strict in terms of the closure dates. So we are proposing that parcels with less than a hundred and fifty linear foot beach frontage have a five-day closure period, and then those with greater than a hundred and fifty foot beach frontage have a fifteen-day closure period. So basically, it's incentive to get the project done quickly, minimize the impacts to the public, but also based upon our experience with these construction activities. While aggressive, these are accomplishable timelines. And then is the project for initial construction? Again, we don't want to be someone's maintenance plan. And then does the contractor hold the insurance required for a license agreement? So risk management sets those insurance requirements to ensure that we have a contractor that has what they need in order to protect the property in the event that damages were to occur. And then does staff recommend bringing the project to the board based upon the submittal? So in the event that we, that there was an issue with the submittal or some concern by staff, that was one of the, the last criteria that we wanted to look at. All right, now during an emergency, you're going to see that there's fewer lines here. So our questions during an emergency is, is there a qualifying emergency and does the applicant meet the conditions of the policy? Is the county property available for the proposed dates? Have all of the required permits been obtained? So we do have emergency permits that FDEP issues after an emergency that does allow for these activities to occur. Is the project for initial construction and/or emergency protective measures? Does the contractor hold the insurance requirements? And then does staff recommend bringing the project to the county administrator based upon the submittal? And in the event that we find the project to be ineligible, then we would, of course, come to the board and have an appeals process. All right, so the approval process. So basically, the application will be presented to the BCC for a non-emergency and then to the county administrator for an emergency. Upon approval, there is a license agreement required, and that is standard. That, this is a, a process that we've utilized in the past, and our county attorney, Ms. Schuler, has definitely strengthened that agreement to protect our assets. We have a ten thousand dollar construction bond in here. So one of the comments that we received from Beach and Shores was that the proposed original amount of five thousand dollars was insufficient. So we increased it to a ten thousand dollars. And then we do have some use fees that staff is proposing for use of our facility, which would go back into the park for enhancements. So for non-emergency, we're proposing a thousand dollars a day or five hundred dollars for a half a day, and then for emergency, we're proposing five hundred dollars a day or two hundred and fifty dollars for a half day. There was a lot of discussion about the use fees at Beach and Shores as well, so something to consider. So during the construction process, prior to construction, the policy specifically states that they need to have a permit in the job box. They need to put up variable message boards to notify the public of the closure. We want to ensure that this is being communicated effectively. They need to secure the site to protect the public and start their site preparation activities, and then they're going to assume liability for any issues that may occur on that particular property. Then during construction, so complete the work in strict compliance with permit conditions. So if there are any issues, we do have the ability to stop the work. This one is a little different, so utilize the county beach sand specifications. So the DEP sand specifications are a little looser than our sand specifications. So staff is recommending that for continuity of our projects and what we specifically put in these areas, that we maintain the county's sand specifications. And then they, the contractor shall minimize impacts to county properties. So of course, it's important to protect our county infrastructure and our enhancements in our parks. And then after, they shall complete the site restoration to satisfaction of the county to an equal to or better than condition, and then complete an inspection with the county to ensure sign-off. So basically, that is the policy in a nutshell. So you'll see in your agenda item, you'll have the draft policies, and then within those policies, there are appendices. The appendices are intended to be staff's working documents with the policy as kind of the, the main guiding document to consider. So I have a series of recommendations. I'm going to read them from, this is the summary, so I'm going to read you the actual recommendations out of the agenda item. So staff recommends that the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners adopt the attached policy titled Private Use of County Property for Non-Emergency Coastal Construction Access upon concurrence by the county attorney, and establishes the B O C C as the authority to approve or deny requests under this policy. Staff recommends that the Indian River County Board of County Commissioners adopt the attached policy titled Private Use of County Property for Emergency Coastal Construction Access and establishes the county administrator as the authority to approve or deny requests under this policy and upon concurrence from the county attorney, sign and execute license agreements pertaining to this policy. And then we recommend that the Indian River Board of County Commissioners adopt the attached resolution setting the fees in Exhibit A upon concurrence by the county attorney. Alternatively, we have reached the point in this policy development process where we could really use your input in terms of, you know, where we're at, if there's any changes, and we can, of course, come back to the board based upon those suggestions. Questions?
Commissioners, questions?
Madam Chairman, I can enlighten y'all on some of this, obviously. It didn't go in this detail to the, to the Beach and Shores like we've had here, but it did go, the discussion did come up of Beach and Shores, and it was kind of mixed. The majority of the Beach and Shore folks were not real crazy about authorizing non-emergency use of county facilities for private construction on, on a non-emergency. On emergency side, I think most of them were okay. Couple of them were very adamant, a couple of them were kind of, you know, would like to hear more or less. The fees, she has a better memory than I do. I don't remember a whole lot of discussion on the fees. I think, I don't think anybody ever gave a specific amount or anything, but they said, you know, the fee should be high because if it's, we're going to use it for a non-emergency, if we're going to use it for a non-emergency thing, a non-emergency thing, then we should be compensated for it if that's the case. But the majority were kind of mixed. There wasn't a lot of really, like, favorable talk to talk about opening it for non-emergency use. The emergency use seemed to be okay. And I, I tend to agree with that. I like the product, I like the, the plan that you gave, I like the ideas, but I still, to save the length of the conversation, I, I still have an issue, like we did in the last meeting in March, of using county act, county property, county parks mainly, for private construction. And the reason I say this is that, if y'all know, people can get their own permit to do their own beach re-nourishment. They've done this for a while. We had, I think after Ian and Nicole, I don't know, we had, we had about twenty or something like that, or there was quite a few that I remember Eric telling me about. There was quite a few permits that were issued, and they have to do it a specific time of year and all that sort of stuff. The process has to go through the county. We have to allow that permit, but they can do it themselves. I don't know, and maybe this, maybe, I don't know if Beth can answer this question or whatever. I don't know when, have we given private access before? Have we given access to county parks before when they had these, their own, their own permit? I don't remember.
For non-emergencies?
For non-emergencies, yes.
Good morning. To my knowledge, we have not issued any kind of authorization outside of emergency restoration, mainly because we did not have a process to do so. Whether or not those projects would have previously, that we've previously issued authorization for would have qualified under the parameters that are now presented to you would be in question because there was no process at that point in time.
Okay. Like I said, I don't remember us allowing them to use county parks for non-emergency use if they wanted to beautify their beach. And I remember the discussion we had in March, if I'm correct, is, you know, we do beach re-nourishment every year. If somebody, I, I don't really understand why, I can tell you probably why, but I don't really understand why somebody would want to not get sand for free. And they're going to pay a lot of money to have sand on their beach. I think a lot of it has to do with the, with the conspiracy theory that if you let the county on your property, the county gets your property. That's the problem we had with Sector Seven. If you remember getting easement signs, they think that by signing this easement, they've signed their, their, their life away for them and their ancestor and their descendants. And that, that's not true. So where I'm going with this is, people have the opportunity to have sand put on their beach by the county for free. If they want to put sand on their own beach, it, I, I feel they are responsible to find a mechanism to get the sand from point A to point B. Maybe it's take down some shrubs and you have to replant them, or maybe you have to take down one of your fences to get there. I, I don't know. I just think we're going to get a lot of grief with the idea that we're closing down a county park to allow a private beach re-nourishment done on private property just to beautify their property. I, I just have, I just have some serious reservations about us doing that. We, we, we've gotten a little bit of grief over Tracking Station after the hurricane that we've had. We've had people complain about Tracking Station, you know, where the tornado went right across the tracks, Tracking Station, of why, you know, we haven't opened it a little bit. So we've gotten some grief from that. It just seems to me like they're, when they built their house on the beach, they had to find a way to build their house. They want to beautify and re-nourish their beach. They need to find a way to do that on their own. I don't think using a county park to go, and then my next question is, and you had answered this, what if they're using one of the county, what if their house is a mile away from the county park and they need beach re-nourishment? We got to allow them to go through the county park, then drive a mile down the beach to redo their beach? I mean, are we going to do that?
So the policy specifically states that this is permission to utilize the county facility should we grant a license agreement. However, it does not provide permission to go through any private property between their house and the park. So essentially, in order for them to go through, they would have to schedule it in such a way that they're traveling during low tide and they're going basically in the public part of the beach.
Okay, so let's say they're.
Unless they received permission from the other property owners to go down.
Let's say they want to use Golden Sands Park, and there are five houses to the north of Golden Sands. Whatever number you want to pick. They're going to use Golden Sands Park, and those trucks and stuff have got to drive down the beach in front of those other four houses down the beach. Is there going to be a problem with, with those folks seeing trucks go down the beach for private beach re-nourishment? They know it when we're doing it. They know, because it's a big deal when we're doing it. When we're doing beach re-nourishment, it's, it's let out, they know we're doing it. I just, I just have way too many questions to feel real good about approving county property for non-emergency beach re-nourishment, just to beautify their house.
There is permitting involved with the non-emergency situation? Okay, so it's not that there are no, no permits. And from your point of view, is this likely to be beautification? I'm thinking it's more of a, you know, preventive measure, you know, like, you don't, you shouldn't be forced to wait until it's an emergency in, in order to access this. And I think if we really want to protect public access, you allow this because, as Commissioner Irman and I both know, we both, we each visited Sector Seven separately. And as you probably know, there are a number of seawalls there, and the seawalls, or the seawalls eliminate public access because all of the sand is swept out, and at high tide, the, the ocean, it comes up to the seawalls. I mean, there is no place to walk. There's no place to do anything. So I would prefer to have people in those homes re-nourish the beach, preferably in, in, not wait until it's an emergency, and thereby, you're preserving, they are preserving the public access. Because if they take the opposite tack and install the seawalls, the beach is gone. I mean, it, it was gone. The times that I visited, the tide was up, and there was no place to walk. And there were dozens of residents that I met with that day that were complaining. And they, and because they, they didn't live right on the ocean. They lived just back from it, and they said, you know, well, we, we have no access. You know, we can't get to the beach because they, they've destroyed it with these seawalls. So in my, my mind, I do not have a problem with that at all. And I'm not sure with Beach and Shores, you know, like, what's, what were they thinking is the alternative? Like, were there any suggestions made about alternatives for this? I don't have a problem with it.
Beach and Shore felt the same way. Like I said, they were, they were pretty reluctant to, to give it their blessing on the, on the non-emergency side. You speak of Sector Seven. Sector Seven doesn't have this issue because there's no public access in Sector Seven. Sector Seven has to come from around Islander, has to come from, from South Beach if the, when we wanted to beach re-nourishment, or the plan was to dredge it offshore and pump it on the beach. That was Sector Seven. So Sector Seven doesn't have, they have no public access, so that we don't have to worry about Sector Seven wanting to.
Well, I would say it's not, it's not a park, but they, they used to be able to walk between the houses, and there were steps there.
Well, they have HOAs, have crossovers, but there's no, there's no, there's no Tracking Station, no Golden Sands.
There's no public access.
Right, there's no, no official park.
There's no, there's no public access. So to sum up my thoughts, and I'd like to hear what y'all have to say, is the fact that, that I just think we might, I mean, it, it would come back for the board, I appreciate that, but I, I still think that you live on the beach, you, you, you're there on the beach. You want to do your own thing, you have to find your own access to, to. you wanna do your own thing, you have to find your own access to, to, to do it. There may be a vacant lot next door, maybe you have to go through your side yard. I, I don't know, but I think for us to close county parks for non-emergency is, is, is gonna cause us a lot of grief in the future. Emergency situations, I am okay with that because I think we have bigger problems than just maybe just one house. And I think it will have to be down there. And I think people understand that after a storm event of some kind, be it an oyster or hurricane, that we have severe erosion. I think they'll be acceptable to saying, well, the beach is closed for logistics, you know, for the access of what we need to do. So I'll stop there. I'd like to hear what y'all have to say about it.
Okay. Commissioner Fletcher?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Irman, I, I hear you. I spent a lot of time at Beach and Shores, and you have now for many years. I have to tell you, it's, there's a lot of challenges to get our beaches re-nourished throughout the years. I wanna thank Ms. Yentula for ensuring that this plan was well-articulated. It, it sounds like we have a good tool in the toolbox for beach re-nourishment. I understand about the, the difference between emergency and a choice to re-nourish the beach, but let's look at that for a minute. Is, if the beaches are, and the dunes are part of our infrastructure, part of their infrastructure, being homeowners on the beach, sometimes the, the point of it being a choice as opposed to a necessity is a very thin line. So I, I do have a challenge about differentiating and having a different opinion on the necessity to do the job. If we're gonna allow it for emergencies, if someone says, hey, you know, it's kinda like looking at your house and saying, my house needs painting. And if you let it go a few more years, your house is gonna need siding. So when we look at that as it's a non-emergency, it might be a very close prevention. So if we're gonna allow access for emergency, I, again, I do have a, I don't have the same consternation as, as you have about a limitation on access. As we've learned over the years, access is, with a twelve to fourteen foot wide piece of machinery, it's very difficult looking at the footprints of the homes. I can understand having to tear down a fence, tear down some trees, replant those shrubs. But sometimes the footprint is so prohibitive of access that we have to look at alternative means to get the job done. Again, I'm not looking at something about, you know, I'd like to have a deeper dune, or I, I wanna just throw more sand out there. I, if, if we have that opinion, then I can appreciate your concern. But I, I, I don't think there's people or citizens willy-nilly deciding to throw some sand out there and going to inconvenience the public in, in any way because they'd like a little deeper sand. It's, it's about necessity. It's just a different type of necessity. I wanted to ask Beth, over the past ten years, how many non-emergency re-nourishments have we had?
To my knowledge, there have been no non-emergency. They've all been conducted under some sort of storm event or post-storm event where the beach park has been utilized. So homeowners may have been able to do that on their private property. But to my knowledge, and that was one of the issues, was that we didn't have a process by which the Parks Division could issue a permit because under our code, we cannot interfere with the reasonable use and enjoyment of a park. So we didn't have a mechanism by which we could even allow that. But we did do that during emergency measures and typically booked ended those private projects with county beach re-nourishment or restoration projects.
As we know, in most sect, in some sectors, there are people that just don't want to have any re-nourishment done because of the other issue that we have discussed in infinitum, and had to take the legal path to ensure that people have the ability, or we have the ability, and we have to get the numbers right in order to do re-nourishment. So I, again, I, I really don't have a difficulty with that, knowing that there's a limitation on the access, and it's going to be closely monitored. We're charging a fee, we're going to have staff oversee and ensure that they're within compliance, and it's going to be for limited, limited time, with the proper signage, direction, and communication to the public so that the inconvenience is limited to ensure that these jobs can be done. Again, this, there hasn't been too many in the past ten years. None.
That have used our park. I would tell you that we had people that did their, that did do their own this past year, but they did it from their location. They didn't need to use any county facilities or anything else. They still have to get a permit, and we approved it because, I don't remember how many there was. Eric knew that, but we did have people that did it beach re-nourishment on their own, but they did it through their yard. They didn't do it using county facilities.
When they have that accessibility, but I think that this ensures that people will be able to do their own after all the difficulty we had about having a unclear path to beach re-nourishment and having to go door to door to ask folks for the permission authority. I, I, I think there might be a little bit more. We might have, see more activity. But I think this, this planned direction, and if we were to adopt this, will ensure that there's a reasonable modality to get the job done within a reasonable amount of time. And it, we can not approve it at any time. And we also can ensure that the proper time constraints are honored. I understand things happen, but, and we, we could look at some of our roadway projects as an indication. And some of our sand projects, too. There are, there are some weather conditions and natural conditions that eliminate the possibility for it to go. But if we have reasonable constraints and they're tolerated within the guidelines, I don't think it's gonna be tremendous, we're not closing down the entire park, and I don't think it's gonna be a tremendous handicap to the accessibility to our resources.
So you brought up a good point, Commissioner Fletcher, that actually is a little bit of a concern of mine. If we are having more people, we're having projects that aren't happening because more people aren't signing easements, right? We just had that happen.
Yes.
So is this something that people could refuse to sign an easement, basically tank a project, and now undertake to use county facilities to do their own private project? And thus, kind of mess up the county's program and ability to have a sustainable shoreline? That would be something that I might, and we might see more of those as, as that easement is required. I'm not sure, but that's something that I don't know from trying to have a beach master plan. If that starts happening, if that's gonna be a problem.
In other words, in the southern, in the most southern area, we did have a tremendous challenge. And we also had to scrub some restoration projects, re-nourishment projects, based on the lack of participation. So then we would have had pocketed, as was well demonstrated, we would have had a pocketed areas on the beachside. What you're saying is that your concern is that then they'll come back behind that and say, all right, we're gonna use county access to re-nourish our particular beach?
Yeah, like, okay, Sector 7, if we had moved forward and it was pocketed, I wouldn't have a problem if people wanted to do their own beach and fill in the pockets. But what happened is we decided not to do the project at all.
Correct.
So, and I think there was, there was a handful of property owners that kind of held that up for the reasons, and they are welcome to have those reasons. I'm not mentioning anything about that, but could those particular ones that basically denied the project come back and then just do their section? And now all the people that did want the project, but maybe wanted to avail themselves of the county funding of it, they're kind of like out?
Well, it might, it might. Let me make a point.
Just one second.
Sector 7, again, just a bad example because there's no public access down there. And for us to do Sector 7, it would have to, we'd have to dredge, and it would have to come that way because it's too far, as we know, and you've heard this before, it's too far from South Beach, it's too far of Round Island, it's too far from South Beach. So you might get some requests for it down there, but there is no public access, they have to use it. My concern also is this, is that probably a lot of these requests that we would see are gonna be people that probably didn't sign their easements, even unless you use Sector 3, that has more, more parks. They probably didn't sign their easement to do this, so they wanna, they wanna do this herself for fear of government intrusion. You know, of us taking their land from, which they think that's gonna happen, I guess, but I think you're gonna see those. I would almost say, if you're gonna do a private project and you feel to do it, maybe you should sign the easement prior, prior to it for future, for future use. But I don't have a problem. I mean, Commissioner Fletcher, you were defining the line of what's an emergency and what's not. If they wanna call our staff and have them come out and inspect it prior to their idea of pulling this, it could be an emergency. I'm okay with that. Maybe they do have some severe washout or something. But just to, I wanna see my beach look pretty is not on our back.
No, it's not about making it pretty, but, you know, Madam Chair, when you, you brought that up, your concern, again, well agreed. But I still look at this as a resolution to the challenges that we did have. The, the nine locations that said, no, we don't wanna give up our customer use, we don't wanna have any access, we're not gonna sign off on the easement, we don't wanna waive our rights. I get that. If that's the line, the line in the sand they wanna draw, yet they'll be able to do it privately, and it has to be done with the consistent grain size and, and all the other requirements that we have, that we have to answer to, they'll have to answer to. But again, they'll be able to do it without having to sign off the easement. And that, that's an important part to point out.
Commissioner Laura, hold on real quick, because Ms. Sheila's been trying to say something.
Yeah, I was just going to say that in the, in the policy itself, in order to be eligible, you have to show you have no practical access, which we've defined in this policy, to say that you really can't do your construction project without, and that financial disadvantage or inconvenience to the owner does not qualify. So, meaning you'd have to make a showing in order to be eligible that you really can't get this project done without using our, our public access. But I think you could even, if it, if the board wanted to, flesh that out to say, also, you're not eligible if you've created this situation for yourself by failing, by choosing not to grant an easement. I mean, I, I'm not, I'm offering that as something that the board could be a consideration in whether they're eligible or not to try to address that. I think you could flesh that part out, if that helps.
I kind of like that idea personally.
I feel a little bit better about that.
Commissioner?
Madam Chair, if I could kinda bring this back to, we're here to discuss a policy. And all of the other conversation that I've heard, respectfully, probably should focus on the policy. One is, who discerns an emergency versus a non-emergency?
So basically, in terms of what, the project or the eligibility for the policy?
Both.
Okay, so in terms of the eligibility for the policy, basically, we are recommending that it is based upon a disaster declaration. So, and that would occur based upon our definition. We have significant coastal erosion due to a weather event that puts upland infrastructure at risk. So we do need to have upland infrastructure at risk for that policy to be triggered under a disaster declaration. And then our imminent risk is defined here as a condition where infrastructure is damaged or is likely to be damaged due to that coastal erosion. So that's when the emergency coastal construction access policy would go into effect, so upon that emergency declaration. And then staff would be doing an analysis of our coastline, like we do after every event, confirming that we have erosion associated with that particular storm.
Right, so now we've defined emergency versus non-emergency. Also, we would only have one of our public access beaches closed at a time?
For non-emergency, correct.
For non-emergency, that would be correct. So, Commissioner Irman, you would have only one of the, of the seven. And we know it's not a frequent episode that occurs. One concern would be on the sea turtle nesting. It seems a little unusual that we would not allow beach re-nourishment during nesting season. However, we would allow, under current policy, proposed policy, an opportunity for the homeowners to actually do work during turtle nesting season. I think that could be an issue. It seems like a, a double standard to some degree. Would we address that?
So in the event of an emergency, there is an FDEP order that is issued, and in that order, they have specifications for the work that can occur. So we pulled the language directly out of that order, and under eligibility, we specifically state that the project shall not adversely affect hard bottom or coral reef communities, seagrass communities, or functional marine turtle nesting habitat that existed before the storm, and shall not contribute to the erosion of adjacent properties. So essentially, the DEP emergency field permits that are issued acknowledge the fact that we do have that protected species, but it puts in some conditions. But typically, what we see when we have a large erosion event is those nests get washed out. So we still do have our sea turtle monitoring company who goes out and checks and marks nests and whatnot, so.
Also, on the non-emergency, would there be a, and I was remiss in reading everything, but was, is there a timeline? And if so, what if the timeline is not met? Do we, the fees increase? How does that go?
So as it currently exists, there is not a mechanism to extend. However, we can add that language into the license agreement should there be some sort of act of God or other issue that occurs that requires an extension. So we can certainly look into addressing that, adding it into the license agreement, and then we could put, we could redo the resolution and put a fine in place at the end for the fee schedule if that is the direction that the board would like to go.
Right, I think there should be some type of incentive to expedite the work to protect our beaches, access beaches that would be closed. Also, what is the appeal process if, if we as a county deny the homeowner? Where do they go from there?
So in the emergency policy, the appeals process would go to the board. So you all would make that determination. In terms of the non-emergency, there, we don't have an appeals process built into that. So Jennifer, I'm not sure if there's any opportunity there, or if it's, your decision is final.
Normally, the board would be the final say, and they would have, if they felt like they had other legal remedies that they wanted to pursue. Did you have an appeal process in mind, or?
I, I think we should, if we're creating a policy, I think we should certainly define an appeal process like most policies have. And if that's the board, that's fine. It could be that simple. My final question is for the administrator. In a catastrophic event- In a catastrophic event, and the governor declares an executive order and the like, that in fact, sir, would trump this policy?
Did you say trumps this policy? I would think it would augment this policy. Because we're declaring, we generally do not declare a local state of emergency until we know that we're one of the counties that are going to be impacted and that we're identified by the governor's, you know, state of declaration.
And as she mentioned, DEP would be involved in that declaration as well.
Correct. I do want to mention that part of the reason that we are here today is because we had two people who were interested in utilizing county property. So, the one that you considered for Tracking Station, which the board denied. And then, we do have another applicant who has been waiting for the county to develop a policy for consideration for construction on their property. Their intent is to install dune cores. They do not have access due to a concrete structure on the property for the heavy equipment. I will say that, under the two existing policies, that it would have started off in non-emergency. However, after Millland, they are in Sector 3. So, we do have erosion there, which has worsened the condition of their dune. And also, basically, they do have an easement. So, or they are one of the people who participated in the easement process. So, just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Is there anything in the policy that speaks to? I understand it's one park period, but can it be the same park if there's multiple ones for different projects over and over? For instance, it seems like Tracking Station gets closed a lot, and people complain about it. Could, like, three neighbors back to back? So, essentially, you're closing it for months on end?
That could happen.
That's probably a worst-case scenario, that would not happen, but something to think about.
So, as written, it could definitely happen. We originally had put in a time limit in terms of X number of days a month, five for 150-litre foot, 15 for greater than that. However, staff removed that requirement due to the very narrow window of time where we're not in sea turtle nesting season. And we have been seeing a lot of late-season nests. So, we all know that that kind of crunches the time, the window down a little bit further.
And maybe it's something that, you know, reasonably would not happen, but it's just...
Yeah.
Since we're throwing out scenarios.
Madam Chairman, staff has put this in two different forms, emergency, non-emergency. I'm okay with the emergency part of it. It's the non-emergency part that, that gives me a little heartburn. I understand all this stuff is, the policy's written out as one park and all that stuff. But, but you all know very well what's going to happen. You're still, we're still going to get complaints about it. You know, it's for private use, it's not for, it's not at the time after an event, where the county's not building new pavilions and all that sort of stuff. You know, we're still going to, going to, going to receive those complaints about that. I like what, or Counselor said about, you know, the easements and stuff like that. I mean, I'm just one vote, but I just tell you, I just, I don't feel real, real cozy about closing a county park or using a county facility for private use. I've long known, if it's just for...
If the applicant, if the applicant has exhausted any other way to repair his or her home residence, I mean, I think it's, the county does have some type of responsibility. I mean, how else are they going to restore their property?
If it's, if it's a legitimate, if it's legitimate, have staff go out there and look at it. If it's a legitimate problem that could affect their house structurally, I consider that almost an emergency. Anything else beyond that is just...
Emergency has been defined by...
It's kind of on your own, it's kind of on your own. Because we put sand on the beaches, they had the option. Because I'm telling you, you're going to get these requests other than the ones she had, because they had signed easements because they're under construction, they're doing some stuff. Is, these are people that are not signing the easements, that will want this, be able to do this. And I'm telling you, that's just everything about that's wrong. You're not going to sign the easement, but you want to use county property? Maybe if they've already had the easement signed, maybe I'm okay with that one. But I just, I see a lot of manipulation and a lot of complaints.
If staff can discern if there's manipulation, that's why we have a policy in place.
The policy does state if, if there's no other means, correct? I mean...
Correct, no practical access.
You have no other practical avenue for renourishment, then we apply for this permit.
And a site visit is a requirement as well.
So, you do have that limitation already.
A site visit is key.
Staff goes out? You can, you can fit your vehicles right through there?
Or neighbors.
We're not going to shut down a park, no. To the county, county administrator, have you received any requests?
Other than, I'm only aware of the, the one that we have that's pending.
Correct.
I guess I'll ask the question, are you comfortable with this? Are you comfortable with the non-emergency portion of it? You, you know what goes on at the, at the beaches and the complaints we get. Are you comfortable with it?
Real quickly, I'd like to make one clarification. So, under this policy and during the time period identified in the license agreement, the county beach park would be completely closed to the public. It's as if the, the contractor would have site control because of liability reasons, as well as just maintenance of traffic, et cetera. So, there's not a provision for, under the current policy, for whether you're closing Tracking Station Beach Park versus Turtle Trail or Sea Grape. However, the mitigation contribution, or what staff has worked together to develop, was a mitigation contribution that offsets the impact to the general public through future beautification and/or infrastructure projects. So, the, the funding hasn't been identified based on the, the daily fee. I think, based on the issues that we've had in the past, no solution has not worked. Staff regularly gets calls from frustrated citizens who, in some cases, maybe don't have any other reasonable access. And I would say that the benefit of doing a non-emergency policy allows time to be spread out over the year of the course of the non-nesting season for projects to occur. And the last storms that we had, where we had several restoration or recovery projects ongoing, beaches and multiple beaches were closed over extended periods of time. And so, I think that you may have the problem one way or another. It's just going to be whether you have that problem condensed immediately after a disaster, which is typically hitting the timeframe that you can do. The work starts around November, which is when our snowbirds are coming back. And so, the challenge there is you may have one or multiple beaches closed, even for county projects where we're doing recovery efforts, whether it's dune restoration or renourishment projects. So, I'd say one of the benefits of doing a non-emergency policy would be you're able to control the volume and the closures over the course of a longer period of time. There are probably other options, but based on staff's meeting and working, workshopping really closely with each other and really troubleshooting and problem-solving and what-if scenarios, I think that the policy that you have today is very well thought out. The Natural Resources Team and Coastal Team did an amazing job. The attorney's reviews, I think, are very tight. There might be some areas where you could require, if it's, it's legal to do so, that a, that the easement be provided. You know, there is public exchange benefit in that regard. So, I see, I, I don't think that there's one-size-fits-all solution. And at any point in time, if staff or you find that the process is becoming burdensome or we're being overwhelmed with requests, I think that would be an opportunity to look at the policy again and make any revisions that were necessary. I would just like to add that, in my professional opinion, this is a stopgap measure. And from a long-term standpoint, it may be beneficial for us to look at adding some construction access points along our coastline, because we are going to continue to see these extreme weather events with those erosion conditions. And access can be difficult for our own projects as well. So, I think, long-term, exploring that as an alternative could eventually lead to sunsetting of the specific policy and solve a lot of the concerns that we have today.
Those are great answers. You're, you're going to have trouble in Sector 7, for sure, down there. I, I'd like the easement being attached to it. If we want to move forward on this, if we're going to take these, do you want to take these separately, non-emergency and emergency?
That's fine, we can do it that way.
I'll make a motion to approve the emergency plan with regards to this.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion, anybody from the public? Yes, sir, come on up. State, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Brett Wallenberg, 13855 99th Street, Felsmer. And just so the public out there can, will understand just how important public comment is. Ronald Reagan said, "The closest thing to eternal life is a government-funded project." Well, this whole beach erosion is, is treating the symptoms, and it's not, not going to solve the problem, and it'll go on year after year. Just south of Sebastian Anl, they put white beach sand. It's calcium carbonate at Shellson, which is neat, which is our beach is made of. And they must have put 100 dump trucks. And I laughed all the way going home because the whole ocean was white. It turned to liquid. Calcium carbonate will turn to liquid when an acid, it won't, in water. But it also created a cliff to where the sea turtles, when the waves would come in, it would wash their eggs up. But anyway, it's just a lot of common sense. My dad was a fish guy 60 years ago. And the shores, I remember vividly foam blowing across our roads on US 1 during storms. Well, that foam is gone now, and that was a chemical reaction. And now, that foam is on the beach. Our shores are acidic. And you neutralize the acid. Well, it stayed alive in the 60s because all our roads were calcium carbonate. And the runoff was high pH. Well, once they paved them roads, automobile exhaust is carbon monoxide. And when carbon monoxide hits water vapor, which is all summer, it turns to carbonic acid. And ton, or if you solve the problem on our shores, there will be no beach erosion. It will, matter of fact, I remember years back, they predicted, our salmon, our beaches were growing at a one or two inches a year. But...
Thank you for your input.
Okay, well, like I say, it seems like on all our city halls, it seems like public comment is the most. I don't care if you're working at McDonald's, you're not going to know what's going on out there until you get average people in here. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate your comments.
Madam Chair, could you repeat the motion?
The motion was to approve the emergency construction access policy.
If I can just add, for the members of the board, keep in mind that we have an extremely talented staff that has spent hours upon hours researching this. Probably two of the smartest people in the building, excluding Commissioner Fletcher. And I, I will go back and say that... One of the cornerstones of, of government is having the confidence in being proud of the employees that work with us, not for us. And for that matter, I, I, I think, looking at these separately, I can't, I can't vote with that. I think every now and then, we have to remind ourselves of the staff that we have. They are the experts, we're not the experts.
Commissioner Laura, I would agree with you on that, but these are two, basically, two separate policies that we need to look at. It looks like we need further discussion on the non-emergency portion. They are, but they are two separate policies.
Okay, the motion on the floor right now is to approve the emergency construction access policy. There is a motion by Commissioner Irman with a second by Commissioner Fletcher. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries four to one. All right, commissioners, we will need to do something with the non-emergency construction access policy.
I'll move to approve the non-emergency.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Moss on the non-emergency construction access policy. I'll second that. Any discussion? Anybody from the public? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries four to one. All right, commissioners, with that, we are going to take a five-minute reset. So order, Ms. Schuler, I under, I'm sorry. I understand that we need to take a motion on the draft resolution too that we missed.
That, that's right. There's a, um, resolution for fees that was attached to that item that didn't get approved.
Okay. Um, so for the last item, coastal construction access policies, we approve the emergency and non-emergency access, but we need to approve the fee schedule, which was attached that we talked about. So...
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All the boxes have been checked. We are good to go. Parks and Recreation and Conservation, approval to record a restrictive covenant declaring Jones Pier Bungalow, federal hazard mitigation assistance, and perpetual maintenance of flood insurance.
So move.
I have a quick, uh, presentation for you. Commissioners, thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to shine a spotlight on the historic Jones Pier Conservation area once again. It's important to recognize our staff and partners who've worked so hard over so many years to ensure that a piece of our county's precious history is preserved. We aren't always successful in these endeavors, and it isn't lost on many of us, that there are pieces of our history that we just didn't have enough time or resources to protect. And the Archie Smith Fish House is being one of those. In some cases, the best thing that we can do is ensure that the story is told through interpretive signage, photographs, and educational programs. We will continue to tell those stories to the best of our ability. We are successfully closing the chapter on the damage to the Jones Pier home, which was built in the early 1900s by a pioneering family on the barrier island. Almost eight years ago, to date of Hurricane Milton, just a few weeks ago, Hurricane Matthew brushed along Florida's east coast, causing widespread flooding and damage. The Jones Pier house, owned by the county, was severely flooded and parts of Historic Jungle Trail were washed out. It was during recovery that we learned about hazard mitigation grant funding that would potentially provide a source of funds to protect the historic home from future flooding events. The event is what set off a course to the project that's nearing completion today, which will provide residents and visitors a place to learn about the gem we call Orchid Island. It's history, the pirating families who lived on the barrier island before there were bridges or roads even. Today, you'll approve a restrictive covenant, which is required by the county to provide perpetual maintenance of flood insurance as part of receiving the federal dollars allocated through the FEMA FDEM Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The item itself doesn't necessarily warrant a departmental item, however, I wanted to spend a few minutes to celebrate the county's success with these efforts. We often joked through the ongoing efforts at Jones Pier that Mr. Jones was playing a trick on us from time to time. And I'll have to tell you that he must be looking down on us all right now with a grin. Four weeks ago, Hurricane Milton caused widespread damage throughout the state of Florida. Indian River County was hit hard too by tornadoes and flash flooding. I fully expected during our site assessments to find some sort of damage at the Jones Pier Conservation Area, which was, um, you know, mostly worrying about flooding, and we had just finished the renovations, which will then turn the, uh, house into an interpretive center. And we hope to have that open to the public this winter. Now, Richard Milton Jones must have been watching over his home, that we had spent so much time and energy protecting, lovingly restoring, and creating place where future stories can be told. Because there wasn't even a scratch on the house. There was no damage. There was no debris. There was no standing water. It was if the storm, like, had never happened. And, you know, I think to myself, that's why we do what we do. Maybe we got lucky. Maybe it was a blessing, for sure. Tornado activity was only a few miles away at the tracking station beach park and all along A1A South. The elevation project has already proven to be a success with historic heavy rainfall we experienced with Hurricane Milton. You know, Mr. Jones was a storyteller, and the process of protecting and restoring the early 19th century bungalow cottage will tell the story for many years to come about Orchid Island and this place that we call home. The pioneer, pioneers and early families, uh, that landed on that barrier island persevered through freezes when their citrus groves were young. They persevered when transportation avenues and even jungle trail didn't exist. And they persevered when mosquitoes were so thick that stories are told that people would bury themselves in the sand. And all of these stories will now have a home in this little bungalow cottage. I would like to personally thank our team, including Wendy Swindell and Paige Lester, who were critical in the development of our application period, providing detailed information to FEMA and FDEM. I would like to thank our Parks Maintenance Team and our Conservation Staff for their work to ensure that grounds and public space are kept clean and safe for our visitors. They are truly a shining example of service excellence. And I would like to thank our Budget Office, Purchasing Division, and Finance Department for their patience and assistance through tedious purchasing and budget processes to utilize these funds, which require that we conform with federal guidelines. And I would like to thank all of you and our county administrators for having the faith and confidence in our ability to complete this project. Had I known it would take this long and be this hard, I don't think that we would have asked to do the project. The result of these efforts to protect the home ultimately resulted in the county receiving just over $342,000 as a reimbursement toward the total cost of the elevation project. Last week, Wendy and I attended the state's first flooding adaptation symposium for three days in Orlando. I'm proud of the work that we've accomplished to date, but this is really only just the beginning. As we experience increasing storms and rainfall patterns, and the rainfall patterns challenge our coastline, it will be more important than ever to ensure that we are taking proactive approaches to these issues. Grant funding is available, but as you can see, the process can take many, many years. And sometimes it requires an enormous staff effort to navigate through the federal and state processes. It's important that we are pursuing funds to, for projects that benefit public spaces and places that make our county unique. Parks and conservation areas should be listed in our vulnerability assessments as critical infrastructure, so that we can leverage future state and federal funds toward improvement projects. Uh, like the, uh, Wabasa Causeway Park Improvement approved earlier under consent, which we hope to receive resiliency funding for. We will continue to work with our Public Works Department, Planning and Development Services Department, and our new Natural Resources Department to ensure that we are maximizing opportunities to tap into funding, using new technology and approaches to protecting our environmentally sensitive lands and watershed, and focus on creative, resilient, and sustainable design approaches for our public parks and recreation spaces. Thank you again for your support, and I respectfully ask for your approval for the recommendation for a restrictive covenant for perpetual maintenance of flood insurance for the Jones Pier Bungalow Cottage.
All right. Commissioners?
Madam Chair?
Both two approve.
Well, I, well, you had a motion.
I did make a motion.
Oh.
Second it. Okay.
I, I, I have to say, uh, Ms. Powell, you're on target. You're right. I mean, we, some of us walked through those nearly three-foot waters when we almost lost the building. And we can go back to when the original purchase of the property. Jones had a plan. And he lived out the plan. And I have to tell you that, looking at what is there now, the gem that is there, uh, you made comment about we were blessed that we did not have damage. I, I think that, uh, is reflective of staff's hard work, proper engineering, proper use of resources, materials, and patience. And I think it was done right. And I think we have a gem that will be here for generations. And I want to thank everyone involved that made it happen, because it was a long trail, many years. Thank you.
All right. Yes, Commissioner Ehrman.
When I took this office four years ago, this is one of the first places that I, that they have to take me to when we did our tour and stuff. And it was pretty amazing what was going on in there, but it was a long way from what Wendy had envisioned and, and wanted to do. And I, I tell you, it's, it's just absolutely spectacular.
Thank you.
Great job.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Fletcher with a second by Commissioner Moss. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are on to county attorneys' matters. The first item is authorization to proceed with foreclosure on code enforcement cases.
Madam Chair, Susan Prado is not, um, she's out sick today, so I'm gonna be handling her items.
Okay.
The first one is direction, the staff is seeking direction from the board on whether to proceed with foreclosure on a code enforcement case. That's an old case. It's from 2009. I know there's a, um, PowerPoint here to kind of go over it with you, the history of it.
Okay.
So, go to the next slide. So this is the property at, um, 2075 7th Court in Vero Beach, which this was originally a code violation from 2009 for overgrown grass and weeds. The property was properly posted. And, um, if you want to flip to the next slide, the, that's, that's the condition of the house. You can go ahead and flip to the next slide. The Code Board conducted, um, a hearing, found the violation, conducted a compliance hearing, and determined that, um, it was not complied with. They issued a hundred-dollar day fine, and it never was remedied. So, um, it's a crazy big fine. It's like $524,000. Yeah. It, it's not a homestead property. It's, remains out of compliance. If you, if you wouldn't, Kim, just advance. We went ahead and, uh, the Code Board, Code Enforcement issued a, um, notice to the owner to appear for a foreclosure hearing to consider whether it should be foreclosed. Um, it was properly served on the property owner, and, um, this is the state of the property today. The property owner did not, um, come to this hearing. My understanding is that the Code Board is recommending, which under 162, the Code Board needs to be the one that, um, recommends foreclosure. They're recommending that the board, uh, move forward with foreclosure. I will say that, um, I've learned that this is an out-of-state property owner, that, um, they're behind, they have unpaid taxes. I'm not sure whether foreclosing will actually get the property owner to move. They may have just written off this property. I don't know. I wasn't able to get any information on, on whether they've had any luck contacting the property owner, but it doesn't sound like it.
Yeah. It sounds like the property owner has washed his hands of the situation.
Right. And we may end up with the property. I was just, obviously with a lien that big. But, so, um, staff is requesting some guidance from the board on whether we should proceed with this foreclosure.
Um, well, we have proceeded with foreclosures in cases similar to this in the past. Um, it looks like you can't even see that there is a house on that property currently. So it definitely looks like it's a, um, not just a blight on the community, but a health and safety situation as well. So Commissioners, uh, what is your pleasure?
So move.
For approval? I'll be happy to second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, I guess the next is the Collins case?
Right. This is an ongoing foreclosure case, and there are several defendants in the case. It, I, I think these are the heirs of the property owners who are deceased. Uh, this is a proposed settlement agreement, and with one of the heirs, he's not a title owner. Basically, in this settlement agreement, he consents to the foreclosure on the property as long as he's not held personally liable for any, uh, money judgment. The foreclosure involves a code enforcement lien and a water sewer lien. So, um, we are recommending that, um, you approve the settlement agreement. I think it'll just kind of take one more person out of the equation. I'm not, since he's not the title property owner, I don't know that probate has taken place. I, I doubt whether we could get a money judgment anyway. So it seems like this is a good, good move.
So there are other title holder, holders, but this will take one of the variables out of the equation.
Right. There's other heirs. Now, uh, I, I did read through the settlement agreement. It's not clear to me that this person is not having a title interest in the property.
Okay.
Um, and, go ahead. I'm sorry.
So this will be a challenge, but at least we're cleaning it up.
We're cleaning one by one. This is the first one. So this is just one defendant that we're settling with.
Move Council's recommendation.
I'll second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right. 13C Code Foreclosures Case Clarification and Update.
Right. So, um, and again, I don't have the benefit of all the history with, uh, the board's direction on pursuing foreclosures of, to gain compliance, but it sounds like from, uh, speaking with Susan and, and reading this board item that they've, it's been effective, that you've authorized foreclosure in 30 cases, um, only really had to foreclose in a couple, and it's been a good, um, way to get people to comply. That, I, it is worth, I think the, what Susan wanted to bring up is though, um, that when there's a senior mortgage or a senior lien on the property that has priority, that's large, like a mortgage, she wants to know if you want to continue to, uh, pursue foreclosure in those cases, because the reality is, is that, um, if we were to foreclose, we may not get paid, because the senior mortgage would have priority in payment out of the foreclosure proceeds. So in those cases, not only we might not get our lien paid, but we also, the good thing about this, these types of cases too, we get our attorney's fees. We can have our attorney's fees recouped out of these proceeds from a foreclosure sale. So I think she just wanted to, um, get some thoughts from the board on whether it's worth pursuing foreclosure, when there's a, when there's a dislarger lien. It, you may want to do it simply to motivate property owners, and whether you want to proceed all the way through to the end if it starts to get expensive and you're not sure if you're gonna recoup.
I would prefer to handle those maybe a bit on a case-by-case basis. I think it's a really good tool, and we've been successful. Um, I'm sure at some point, we're going to face a decision on if it's gonna cost us more than we're gonna get, and we possibly won't even get the property. Is that worth getting it cleaned up, though? Because otherwise, they just linger for so long, and it's, you know, out-of-state owners or bank owners, and it's very hard to get the attention to even address it, because the fines don't mean anything to some of those type of corporate ownership. So I like having it as a tool.
Viceholder.
Yeah. So then...
Just on the case.
If it, if and when it starts coming up, I think maybe...
Right. We'll just talk it through on, if it makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. That sounds good.
Thank you.
Um, so you just needed kind of some direction on that? So you just needed kind of some direction on that?
Yeah, I think there was direction, I think that makes sense, I think that approach makes sense. I mean, when we come to you, we can give you a little bit more background. I have in the past had clients reluctant to pursue when they're just a large lien and it's...
I know sometimes it might not make financial sense, but it might make sense for that particular community, so we'll have to weigh those.
And just to clarify, abatement is really not a method that, I'm getting the sense that the county likes to take as an alternative to foreclosures. Foreclosures is your preferred tool.
I don't know if we've had that discussion, but foreclosures are a good tool.
Okay, well, we can, when we come to you on a case-by-case basis, if it looks like that's not the way that the board wants to go, maybe we can present some alternatives.
Okay, I think at the end of the day, we're just motivated to get the problem handled, and most of these come have been lingering for some time. So if there's a better way that's more effective and quicker, that's good, but this carrot seems to work pretty well. But that doesn't mean it's not the own, or this hammer, but that's not the only one. So yeah, I would bring others to...
All right, thank you.
All right, and then the next item is permission to advertise public hearing amending Indian River County Code Sections 102.01-1 and 102.04.
Right, commissioners, bringing this as part of this ordinance is simply a cleanup to your meeting procedures. There's a couple things that need to be changed. One, the county administrator mentioned earlier that we have this prohibition to holding commission meetings on the last Tuesday of the month, which probably made sense when you were doing three meetings a month, but maybe, may make less sense now that you're down to two. So the recommendation is that we delete that sentence from Indian River County Code Section 102.01 Subsection 1. And then I brought some proposed changes to 102.04, which is your order of business, which lays out how you hear your board items at your regular meetings. And I'll skip the public comment and address that at the end, my recommendations about that, but simply a recommendation that under departmental matters that you add the Building and Facility Services, which is your new department, and also the Sandridge Golf Course, and that would be under subsection 13, just as a matter of updating that section of the code.
I do have a question about that.
Yeah.
Just to that specific. All these are departments, but Sandridge isn't actually a department, and we have other recreation facilities and/or enterprise funds, so why this one versus the rest of them?
And I'm going to let the county administrator, made that request, address it.
I had a conversation with Mike Zito, it's kind of a standalone enterprise fund, I mean, not that they all aren't, but there's no, it doesn't fall well underneath a department. So therefore, I mean, it reports directly to Mike, and they have their own agenda items at times, and there's really no place if they want to, like, we know one of the issues out there is, is the potential expansion and redoing of the clubhouse, so there's just different, there's items specific to that, and it would just, it'd either come under a county administrator matters because it does report to, specifically to the deputy county administrator, and that would be the reason why to have its own area. And apparently, it used to be on the agenda at one point in time as its own.
Okay. I mean, it's fine, it just seems weird to me, because they're all, the rest are departments, and it's not really a department. But if it's not under a department, I suppose.
All right, okay. The next section that is simply a recommendation to the board is that you consider revising how you accept a public comment at meetings. The chair did bring this issue up to me in a conversation that we were having, just maybe seeking my input on how to best handle public comment. And I will, I do admit, I thought, I think it's strange, when I read your website, that it makes it look that you, like you have to fill out a public comment card to come and address the board, and then we put them on this public discussion section, although your policies do allow for public comment on matters being considered by the board. And that's consistent with Florida statutes. Florida Statute 286.0114 requires the board to take public comment on matters that you're considering at some point before you take action. And so, I simply recommend just, I'm trying to make it consistent and uniform, how you take public comment and maybe remove a perception, whether fair or not, that you actually have to sign up in advance to come and speak to the board. I have noticed that not having, so my recommendation is that you have public comment on agenda-related items at the beginning before you take any action on public business, and that way you just get it out of the way, people can have their three minutes, they can, they don't have to stick around for the rest of your meeting, and they can just have an opportunity to have their comments heard. I have noticed when I've seen how board items progress, that the burden is on the chair then to always remember to ask for public comments, but sometimes when the, when the motion and second is made really quickly and it's passed, that gets overlooked. This way, you're not ever overlooking it, you're always providing the public their statutory right to comment on the items that you're going to be taking action on, with the exception of public hearings, which require, you know, which are required that you ask for public comment specifically in that item. So I just thought that was a clean way to do it. And then I also noticed that the board likes to hear from the public on non-agenda-related items or does accept public comment, and that that might be appropriately placed at the end of the meeting when you've had, everybody's had the chance to get your business done. So those are just, that's just, and then I recommend that you delete this public discussion item section because it's, it seems a little bit odd, and it almost is a sort of, kind of treats speech a little bit not uniform. We have these people that come, and we call it a public discussion, and they want to engage in a back-and-forth, and I'm not trying to stop speech, but I'm not sure it's super productive. So those are just my recommendations, I thought I would bring it to you for discussion. Certainly, it's your prerogative how you want to proceed.
So commissioners, I did have a discussion with Ms. Schuler about this a couple weeks ago, because we have had in the past, and specifically a couple weeks ago, a gentleman that came in, and he wanted to speak about the lagoon, which wasn't on the agenda, and he had not signed up ahead of time. Because in order to get on the agenda under public discussion matters, you have to fill out the form prior to the agenda closing date, which is like, I don't know what it is now, but it's like 10 days before the meeting or something like that. But we have forms in the back that people can fill out, and he had filled out a form, but we don't have any place to do that, so we sent him upstairs to fill out a form with Tina and get on the next agenda. He wasn't, he did not come to the next meeting, but he came to this meeting. He actually spoke under the beach item. But he was here again, trying to get on the agenda. So there is, and I've heard from other people that they were here to talk, they didn't know when they could talk or not talk, and it's kind of confusing, and it seems a little rigid, and I'm not exactly sure that it's really the look from a perception standpoint that we want. That being said, I personally like when we have public comment under each item versus like at the beginning, getting it all there, because I can't...
Bender's kind of thing, having it at the beginning, giving people an option to give their public comment and leave if they've got other business, and then also making sure that you've always provided that opportunity.
No, that's a good idea, too, because we do have people that they don't know when the item's going to come up, but they don't want to stay for the whole thing, so it provides that opportunity if they can't. And I do like anything that's not on the agenda being at the end, because we need to do our business before all that stuff. And I know we have, and the, you know, we basically have kind of a three-minute policy, which today, that was, that was on me, that we diverted from that, but it was, I think you guys understand the reasoning for that. That being said, if this is something we pursue, I do suggest that there is some visual cue for people to know that they have three minutes and that where they are in that three minutes. I think even if it's a little timer or something, I know in the past we put something up on the screen, but I would just make that suggestion that there's some visual cue, and it's not on, you know, the chair to hit start and stop on the stopwatch on their phone, and so it's all kind of uniform. And I think that's standard at other councils, that they have some timer or whatever.
We've done that in the past, Madam Chair. When we've had issues of extreme significance or with an abundance of response from the public and participation, we've had the shot clock off to the side, and I think it's worked very well. But I don't know about a consistent diet of that, some of the municipalities do that, and it's almost like, again, there goes the shot clock, all right, and then when the timer goes off, we haven't curtailed or hit the subject matter that was necessary, or the resident has not been able to express themselves. Sometimes it takes four minutes. And I think that if we leave it at the chair's discretion to do that on a regular diet, again, move it to where, where we have 175 seats filled and people are using both podiums, I think the last time we had that was the mask discussion, and we had lines to the back and wrapped around, and there were people waiting outside to speak. I think the shot clock was well appropriate for that matter, and it was well explained prior to the meeting. I think there's room for that, but not on a regular diet, I think it makes it too sterile.
That's totally fine, my only, and I don't disagree with you. My only concern was, would it create a perception that rules apply to some people and not to others? I don't, I could see that becoming...
You know, we make our announcement, keep your comments germane and consistent with the product, try not to be repetitive, especially when we have a large group, but then again, the shot clock would come into play. As far as council's suggestion on a speaking time, again, some jurisdictions do that. It might lead to two bites at the apple, one for the public comment, and then when you have the agenda item, you've invited me to speak again. So there might be a little play with that. If the public comment time is established where it's open, an open forum, and everyone has an opportunity, if you do it at the beginning of the meeting, it might, might erode upon some of the agenda items' foundation early on, and also the idea where we've given people the opportunity to speak so they can continue on with the rest of their day so their voice was heard, it may not be attached to the agenda item, so I don't know, it's all in the timing. Does it happen before the agenda or after the agenda? Some jurisdictions do it after the agenda, some do it right in the middle of the meeting. I don't know, what's your thought, counsel?
Again, I just am concerned that we're not consistently providing an opportunity for comment on agenda items, which is what we're legally required to do, that it, again, it falls, the burden falls on the chair to remember to do it, it's not always, in my, what I've seen, always consistent, because some things are moving quickly, some things not moving quickly. So I like the idea of having just that there at the beginning to give people the opportunity to come...
Getting to the meeting.
Leave, and then you've clearly met your statutory requirement to do that with your agenda items, whether during the course of the board item you want to have more discussion, I think again is, you can have a little more discretion, like you're talking about, to gauge what the level of public interest and whether you want some more public dialogue.
It's a good idea.
Yes, Commissioner Moss?
You know, at the current time, you know, we're the anomaly of county commission, because the city councils, they all have public comment. In fact, I was surprised when I got here, and I didn't realize until after I was elected, because the day I was sworn in, people asked me, friends said, "Well, when will we be able to congratulate you?" And I said, "Well, you know, do it during public comment." And they said, "Well, there isn't any on the agenda." And I looked, and I really was shocked, because it's, that's a standard format for city councils. And in fact, when I was the mayor, one of the things, the first thing I did as mayor of Vero Beach was I moved public comment forward, because it's such an easy thing to do. The FPL deal was a lot more complicated, but I moved it forward because before I was elected, I was chairwoman of the Utilities Commission and attended a six-hour meeting, this is when public comment was at the end of the meeting, and there was a woman, God bless her, who sat there for six hours to speak for three minutes about a matter of public safety, and had to do with the beaches where people could get hurt. And I so admired her resolve that I thought if I ever had the opportunity, I would move it forward. And it's kind of, if you take a step back for a minute, because earlier today, we were all talking about beach access, and it's so important, we have to, you know, people have to have access to the beach. Well, we're a beach, in effect, I mean, they should have, at public, always should have access to us, they should always be able to speak to us, they should always be welcome here. We should never be a seawall, and I think that's what it's become, and I don't, you know, I don't know the origin of this, but people have the sense, and I've heard this a number of times out in the community, people have the sense that they are not really welcome here. And I think this would go a long way, and I would thank the chair for bringing, calling it to the attention of our new attorney. I think this would go a long way toward correcting that, you know, that perception, because I mean, personally, I feel that everyone is welcome here, and, you know, I would hope that all of my colleagues do, and I support this 100%, whatever form it takes. If you want to have it at the beginning, you want to have it at the end, you want to take it separately and do both. And I understand your concern that in the heat of the moment, you might forget to take it, so on an agenda item, so have that up front. I think, I think it's terrific, and after everyone else has commented, I'd be happy to move to approve, but I'll wait for discussion.
Yes, Commissioner Ayrman.
Okay, I want to get this straight in my mind, because I agree with Commissioner Fleischer about the time clock and all that sort of stuff. There are certain times that probably makes sense, and certain, and most of the time it doesn't. What we do currently is not broken. I think of, out of all the government's meetings that I've witnessed, whether it's on a state level or the local level, over the many years, is that this is still the way we do, it's pretty good, it's still friendly, it's still up to the chairman as to how long they're going to allow somebody to talk, such as was done today, and you did it very gracefully, Madam Chairman, I thought. I think some tweaking is fine, so I guess I just want to make sure that I'm following this right, is that we go through the call to order, plights of allegiance, seditions, leations, proclamations, approval of minutes, information from staff, and this is where we do public comment on anything they want to talk about, or is this on the agenda items?
What's proposed here would be public comment specific to anything that's on our agenda.
Okay, that's what I thought, but let me make sure. Okay, we get to an item on the agenda, can they still comment?
That would be at the chair's discretion, but it has been the practice of all the chairs since I've been here to allow that, so I would assume it would continue.
So what would be the purpose of this, to allow somebody, it's maybe commenting on them because they have to go, they need to leave?
Yeah, think about, there's a lot of people that come for what may or may not be a controversial item, but it's towards the end of the meeting. And they can't stay because they have other obligations, so you see people start trickling out after the meeting begins. This would give them the opportunity to at least put their comment on the record and then leave if they wanted to, or they, it would also give people the opportunity... then leave if they wanted to. Or they, it would also give people the opportunity, because counselor is correct, there's a lot of times, and we just had a couple of items where I didn't call for public comment. I mean, there's nobody in the audience, which was half of the reason why. But there might be somebody outside that wanted to talk and I didn't know that. So it would kind of cover that as well.
So we still have pu- public discussion on an item when we're discussing the particular item?
I would envision so.
Okay. So that, as long as we don't change that. And at the end, we have public comment on non-agenda related matters. If I want to come in and talk about.
That would be where the rig bees would have come in today.
But nothing's on the agenda. I can talk about that then at the end.
Right. Or RFP processes, or lagoon health, or any number of things that may not be on our, specifically on our agenda.
Okay. Is that normally at the end? I thought that was like, we'd kind of normally at the beginning.
Put it at the end. I mean, you could move it all to the beginning where you just took public.
Maybe it should be, should it be tied in at the beginning with the agenda?
I think the thought, I think the thought is, I will use the school board as an example. They have, they have all their comment at one place at the beginning of the meeting. And what you find is they were having a problem being able to even conduct their meeting before midnight because of all the public comment. And most of it was not things related to agenda items.
Right, right.
So if we move that, we are still able, I don't envision any of this being some kind of major problem to start with. But I think what the attorney's trying to do is at least establish some policies that we could tweak if we needed to. But it, it provides a clearly defined place for public comment. And I would prefer having non-business items at the end so we can get through and staff can get through the business at hand be, before. Cause I mean, once you open stuff like this up, it's like, once you start televising your meetings, more people come for comment than, and that is fine. That is what we're here for. But it's just something I think we need to keep in mind.
Find ourselves that this is their government.
Mm-hmm.
Absolutely.
Their platform. So if that's the case, and we were able to do that, we historically do not take action on public speaking items. So this eliminates the necessity for requests to speak, directing them to the county administrator's office so they can fill out a form, so that one person can speak, which historically brings two or three others or interested parties. And then we say, well, you can't speak, you know, you didn't fill out the form. I get it. I, it's going to be a little bit of a learning curve on our part and the public's part. And I think if we travel it in an appropriate fashion, it could work well to serve for public information, public input. And at the end, if there's stuff to do, which we historically do not take action on, kind of gives us indication to know what we need to do for future agendas as well. If there's something that's brought up that, you know, we can comment then to them to say, you know what, we'll have to revisit that. We'll research a little bit and then maybe we'll work together and get it on the agenda. And I think that's about where, where it can go. I, I think it's going to take a little bit of a curve though.
I, I think it would help to have the website kind of give, I think.
Explain it?
Yeah. I can work with staff to make the website more understandable.
We can always change it if we don't like it.
Yeah. We can change it. We can go back. We can tweak it.
I just want to be clear on how we were.
I just had a question.
Mm-hmm.
Do you, do you want to specify, I'm just thinking now, what we did on Vera Beach City Council, open, open public comment. We had a three-minute limit and it was stated, you know, on the, on the agenda. So.
Yes. So.
What, what would your?
We, we can do that. I mean, currently, the rest of your policy deals with public comment. You're allowed to come and speak on agenda items. It's limited to three minutes. And we kind of have that language. We could, we could put, I mean, you can.
I would agree with what Commissioner Fleischer. I think it makes it kind of sterile. I think we're, we've done a pretty good job as chairman, chairman, chairman.
Commissioner Moss, I think, I think what the gentlemen are saying is that we have the policy, but by not kind of spelling it out on the agenda, if we wanted to, to give somebody the opportunity to speak longer, it kind of reverts to chair's rules. And if we call it out.
That's always the case, yeah.
Then I think the concern is, then we have to evenly apply it. And there's some situations, we've seen many of them, where people need more than the three minutes. But if it's abused, then maybe that's something to say at the beginning of the meeting, or it's a very, there's a lot of people to talk about it, you know, hey, as a reminder, there's three minutes and today we're gonna.
You know, there's difference between great information and a filibuster. And I think that strong leadership will be able to keep that in, in check.
Commissioner Laura, you've been very quiet. No, no comment, no public comment so far from you.
I think it's fine. I think.
You didn't fill out a form.
Yeah, I didn't fill out a form. And I, I did speak briefly with Ms. Schuler about it. And I, I think you're fine, either way. And it all comes back to the authority of the chair. He or she can move agenda items. They can shut people down. They can allow them to go on. It's chair privilege. It's that simple.
Okay. If we were to do this, does that mean we'll get rid of the forms up front that are confusing everybody?
Yes.
Okay, awesome. All right, commissioners.
To approve.
All right. That's right. I had a motion from Commissioner Moss. I'll be happy to, or go ahead, Commissioner Fleischer. No, that's all right. I like, because you're getting ready to leave. I want you to do it.
And just to clarify, this, this will be advertised and brought back to an ordinance form. Yeah.
Okay. But it sounds like there's general consensus, so I shouldn't have to rehash it. All right, perfect. There is a motion and a second. Any public comment?
You got it in there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for bringing that. I appreciate that.
Have the public for a comment.
I know, I know. All right. Next item, guess Commissioner Fleischer.
What do we got? One more?
Approval of the SWID meeting minutes of August 20th.
Madam Chair, move approval.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Agreement for landfill gas wellfield expansion project. I think you're going to have to come down for this one.
Still, good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Asher Metta, managing director for Solid Waste Disposal District. All of you had the pleasure of coming out for our groundbreaking ceremony for the No Petro project. And, you know, since then, they've been doing a great job on their site. Things are, things are progressing well over there. Similarly, on our end, we, I'm happy to report, we had delivery of our high-pressure gasket that showed up last week. No Petro also brought over the hydrogen, H2S vessels, hydrogen sulfide vessels. So the project is moving forward, both on our side and their side. What's happened recently is that as our new cell, the 10-acre cell that's nearing completion, I was, I had to make, I had to make a decision about landfill capacity and making sure I had enough capacity for waste, daily waste coming into landfill. And there was an area of the landfill that I had to basically abandon about eight gas wells in order for us to go in and start putting waste in there. And so what, what that did is it reduced our gas flows temporarily. We're going to be putting about another 20 to 30 feet of waste in that area. And, and so although our end goal is this RNG project, to produce high-quality gas to send to the, to No Petro, our, our gas flows, I think, say back in March, were as high as, you know, 1,200, 1,300 SCFM. We're around 600 right now, almost half that. And, and it's, it's literally when it comes to landfill gas is sort of the more straws you can put in the, in the landfill, the more, more sort of gas. And the straw's in the right place, more, more gas you can get out. So this project with SCS, the proposal in front of you, is basically, and we're expecting later this month to have them back out there, but SCS to go in and install 10 additional gas wells. And, and a lot of them will be in this fresh waste that we're putting in. And, and what that's going to do is allow us to get our flows back up. And, you know, I know, No Petro's expressed some concerns because they've got, you know, 20-plus million dollars in the project that they're building next door, you know, wanting to commission their project. We've been, we've reached out to George Herrera. County Administrator asked me to reach out to George Herrera with No Petro. We're trying to get him to come and give the board an update on their project, on their side as well. Hopefully, hopefully, next meeting or the meeting after that, we'll try to do that. But, so again, both projects are going well. We, we, we need to go back in and install some additional gas wells to get our gas flows back up. I'm very confident that, that by putting these gas wells back in, that we'll, we'll, we'll meet the requirements of our, our contract with No Petro to be able to have enough gas flow to, to send next door. The, my latest projection with construction right now, we're, we're saying first quarter of '25 is when we expect that, you know, the high-pressure gasket is on our site. We need to connect all the piping. No Petro's been doing great work in bringing their gas lines over to our, our skid. But all of that needs to be connected. A lot of electrical work needs to be done. Our contractor has reached out to our building department. They've been great in working with us and sort of expediting permits and things like that. So everything's going, going well. But again, in order to make sure I had capacity for our community, to make sure I maximize airspace, I, I had to, you know, and some of these wells were not, not producing high, high gas yields. You know, they were, they were pretty deep. So, so, you know, the call was made, if you will, by my, myself to abandon those wells so we can maximize airspace. But I'm confident that if we go back in, add these additional 10 wells in, we'll, we'll meet the minimum requirement, I think it was 900 to 1,000 SCFM that, that No Petro needs. We'll certainly be able to do that, I, I think by the end of this year. So they're quite not ready to commission. We're quite not ready to, to send them the gas. But we will have gas when the project is ready to go online. And I'll be happy to answer any other questions you have.
Commissioners, any questions?
You feel confident? You feel good with it?
I do, sir.
All right. It's good enough for me.
All right. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll be happy to second that. Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we'll move on to final page of GOC Intech for Work Order Number 19, Permit Compliance Monitoring Reporting, Indian River County Landfill Facility.
Madam Chair, move approval.
Thank you. I'll be happy to second that. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And with that, commissioners, thank you. Happy Election Day to those that are running and good luck. And Commissioner Fleischer, you're going to have a long night of canvassing the vote, but we appreciate you, you doing that. And with that, we stand adjourned.